Good morning. This meeting of the Blair County Board of Commissioners is called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection, after which we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
Okay, thank you.
With this one too?
Yeah. Good morning. This meeting of the Blair County Board of Commissioners is called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent reflection, after which we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, could you call the roll for anyone joining us remotely?
I believe that's Helen Schmidt joining us remotely.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else joining us remotely this morning? I'm not hearing anyone else, sir. That is roll.
Thank you. You'll see under Item 5, the schedule of upcoming meetings. Due to the probable lack of a quorum on Thursday, we are going to try to complete all our business items today. If we do that, the Thursday board meeting will be canceled. Commissioners did receive draft copies of the April 4th Commissioners Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Webster, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. They are approved, and we'll move on and open the meeting at this time to any public comment. Right, hearing done. We do have two proclamations today. And the first one?
Commissioner's office.
Oh, I think that's, thank you. Just skipped completely the Commissioner's office.
It's okay, I'm just gonna read my resignation.
I do have a couple things, sorry. One is that records improvement for Thursday is canceled. So in your, on Number 5, you can, that 9:30 on Thursday is canceled. My other is that there is an opening on the Board of Assessment Appeals. That position is listed on the county website under our open positions, and the deadline to apply is May 1st. So if you're interested in joining the Board of Assessment Appeals, please submit an application there.
And that will be under jobs?
It is under jobs.
Under jobs, so it won't, a little different than the norm, so, for boards at least. Thank you. Now, Commissioner Burke, you're gonna take care of the first proclamation, I believe.
Yes. This is a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in Blair County, regardless of age, gender expression, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, religion, disability, or socioeconomic status of a victim, family member or significant other of a victim. And whereas no single person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victims and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to victims. And whereas, ending sexual assault in Blair County must include active public and private efforts, including conversation about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. And whereas, the Victim Services Program of Family Services Incorporated leads the way in Blair County in addressing sexual assault by continuing services, including a 24-hour hotline service to victims and their significant others, offering support and comfort to those impacted by sexual assault during criminal proceedings, and empowering those impacted by sexual assault to begin the healing process. And whereas, the Blair County District Attorney's Office of Victim Witness serves as a direct line of communication between sexual assault victims and the prosecutors who battle to achieve accountability in the criminal justice system, allowing a sexual assault victim's voice to be heard and heeded by both the judge and jury in the courtroom. And whereas, the national statistics demonstrate that justice for sexual assault victims has been elusive in our country, since only 5% of sexual assaults lead to arrest and only 3% of all sexual assaults result in a conviction, the Blair County District Attorney and his assistants have committed to transforming Blair County into a safer haven for victims than the rest of the nation by prioritizing sexual assault prosecution in Blair County through trauma-informed interactions with victims, through working in lockstep with law enforcement to strengthen investigations that pave the way for effective arrests and successful prosecutions, and through zealous courtroom advocacy to secure convictions from Blair County juries and strong sentences from Blair County judges. And whereas, the Victim Services Program, the Blair County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Program, and the Blair County District Attorney, along with his assistant prosecutors, have all worked together to build collaborative relationships to improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence, thus setting an important example for how the rest of the community might work together to speak out and find solutions to sexual violence. And whereas, the Victim Services Program, the Blair County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness, and the Blair County District Attorney request public support and assistance as they continue their efforts to bring real hope for freeing Blair County from the tragedy of sexual violence to create a future where all women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and commend this observance to all citizens. I would put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we do have, I think, representatives from Family Services, and I know you have an event coming up. Would you like to kind of talk about that to us?
Thank you, Commissioner Burke. I am Alex Roschnabel. I am the education specialist with Family Services. I was asked by our director, Ashley Guebaco, to accept this proclamation in her stead. We do have our annual luncheon learn coming up on April 28th at the American Legion. I will be presenting on what is rape culture, and our direct services coordinator, Cheryl Gonsman, will be presenting on Sexual Assault 101 Back to Basics. So we'd like to invite you, as well as all of the public, to attend. It is free of cost. So being here in Ashley's stead, I will just say a quick thank you, Commissioner Burke, and the remainder of the commissioners as well, for standing alongside of our agency, as well as other agencies, and the remainder of the county of Blair, to help educate the public and hopefully work toward the eradication of sexual violence. So I wanted to ask, can we get a picture, please? Thank you.
They don't have to hide the computers that way. You guys do it.
This is for National Library Week, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Webster if she would present that proclamation, please.
Thank you very much. Proclamation for National Library Week 2023. Whereas libraries are more than book repositories, demonstrating the breadth and depth of all they offer to their communities, with opportunities for community engagement, learning, and growth while delivering new services which more closely connect to residents and their needs. Whereas libraries throughout Pennsylvania have consistently served as valued and needed institutions, and library staffs and volunteers strengthen these centers by fueling their efforts to enhance the surrounding community. Whereas the Pennsylvania Library Association is the state's oldest and most diverse professional library organization, serving libraries, library employees, library trustees, and friends of the library groups, working to heighten awareness of the various tools and resources, such as STEM programming, workforce development, and life planning tips libraries offer. Whereas collectively, we recognize librarians as information professionals who provide expertise, services, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources and material, making their own informed decisions about the words they navigate. Whereas librarians level the playing field for anyone who seeks information and access to technologies, particularly as society continues to transition the way in which information is shared and explored in the online world. Whereas the Pennsylvania Library Association's Pennsylvania Forward Initiative provides a collective voice for the state's libraries to tell their own stories, building capacity for the work they do with and for patrons through five literacies: basic, information, civic and social, health and financial, underscoring the importance of lifelong learning. Whereas Pennsylvania libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas April 25 is National Library Workers' Day, a day for all library staff, volunteers, and supporters to highlight the immeasurable contributions made by libraries. April 26 is National Library Outreach Day, a day recognizing the importance of libraries being available beyond their physical structure. And April 27 is Take Action for Libraries Day, a day which encourages everyone to recognize how libraries enhance communities and quality of life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Blair County Board of Commissioners proclaim National Library Week, April 23 to 29, 2023, in Blair County. Presidents are encouraged to visit their local libraries this week and beyond, exploring all that libraries have to offer, realizing that literacy is power and that libraries provide the fuel to move Pennsylvania forward. I make that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We do have representatives from the Blair County Library System. We'll refer to them at this time. We have both Jennifer Noisely and Heather Winscoe with us today. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. This is for a much taller person. So I also want to acknowledge that we have some of our library directors with us this morning. We have Jennifer Pell from the Tyrone Snyder Public Library, Jessica Ford Cameron from the Bellwood Antis Public Library, Danette Feathers from the Martinsburg Community Library, and Kevin Yoder, our newest library director in the county, from the Holliesburg Library. So they are there to join us. I want to start off just by, again, thanking this Board of Commissioners for their unwavering support of our libraries. We know that the investment that you make in the public library system in Blair County is one that the constituents very much appreciate, and, you know, and we do as well. It helps us do our work and provide the mission of, you know, serving everybody to the best and fullest of our ability to level that playing field of access to free information. Heather has created this fabulous little infographic for you. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of numbers, and even though they're in big print, I'm gonna wear my glasses to do it anyway. So the county investment is highlighted at the top there for you, and I just wanted to draw your attention to the bubble that has hours open. That's an annual count. There's 15,207 hours that our fellow community members had access to library services in the county. And that's a very significant number of access hours. Number of library visits, almost 178,000 walked through the doors of our public libraries in fiscal year 2122. And right smack dab in the middle, 266,179 items were checked out. If we did a small mathematical calculation, you will see on the bottom right, the dollars saved by our county constituents by using the libraries in fiscal year 2122, $3,055,622. So the investment that you're making is making a difference for people. It is helping them to save money, to continue to have access to information and services that are much needed, and express my appreciation for that today to all of you. On the backside, in case you ever want to contact any of us, we have a listing of each of our libraries and the current directors' names and telephone numbers. You know, we welcome further conversation about how we can best serve the county in our, in our community libraries. And to highlight a couple of things that we have as countywide collaborations, we love our partnership with Fort Roberto. We have the backpacks in our libraries for folks to check out that have some activities that you're walking through the fort and the surrounding grounds, some interactive things to do with your kids, you know, while you're visiting the fort. We have a couple of things coming up with the Healthy Blair County Coalition. One is this Fighting Fraud event, which we're holding at the Blair County Convention Center on April 26th, and then at the Morrison's Cove Memorial Park Facility on April 27th. Those events are free for anybody who would like to attend. We're also participating in the Let's Move Into Kindness event at Lake Mott Park in June. We have added ABC Mouse to the database, database that the county constituents can access. That is a really, really phenomenal early childhood database where children and their families can go in and do all sorts of early literacy activities, track their improvement, and see progression through those activities over time. And of course, Summer Quest is coming up. Each of our libraries will be having multiple events and special programming. The theme this year is All Together Now. So one thing we're really excited about is we're going to have a map of the county where all of the libraries, each of the eight libraries is located, and we're going to encourage our county constituents to visit each of the libraries over the course of the summer and get a little stamp on their map. So we haven't done that before. We're really hoping it goes well, because we'd like for people to get out and see, you know, where the resources are in the county. Are there any questions, or?
Yeah, I'll ask one question, and I'm sure we'll all have some comments. But in the number of checkouts, I know there's more and more use, because I say that because I myself use the online checkout all the time.
Yes.
How does that break down now between, like, in-person and online?
So the number, that is inclusive of the number of e-material checkouts. And Heather, do you have approximate percentage of?
I don't, but there are still far more in-person checkouts.
I'm sure.
Yeah. I think, I know, I just looked at the numbers for the Altoona Library yesterday for a different presentation that I'm doing, and it's about 15% of the total number of checkouts were e-materials versus print collection materials.
And whatever the new, the newer e-checkout from the older one is such a better, for the reader, is so much easier to use. So I want to thank you again for doing that personally. That's, that was great.
Yeah, yeah. We like cloud library now.
We're gonna get a picture, but commissioners, anything?
I just wanted to comment. My daughter saves her receipts and adds up how much money she saved me, so that's, I love that.
So she can use that money as a credit somewhere else for clothes, or yes? Well, thank you. Yes, if we could get a picture, that would be fun.
We absolutely will get a picture. Okay. get great returns on. You can see that it's literally exponential, so we're grateful for the work of all, of all our county libraries, all of which, for most citizens, there is a library within 15 minutes or less, which is, I think, a really, really great thing, speaks well in the system and the county. So Nicole, can you start us on the consent agenda, please?
Sure. The base consent agenda is Resolution 186 of 2023. It's the payment of the four warrant lists as outlined in Item A. It's ratification of four warrant lists as outlined in Item B. That does include a payment to Thomason, Chandra, and Dora in the amount of $1,550. Item C is a payment, application number two, received from Francis J. Palo on the Box Cover Project in the total amount of $41,595.61. It's employments, employment status changes, one effective date change, and resignations as outlined in Items D, E, F, and G respectively.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Webster, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I'm an aye with an abstention to the payment to Thomason, Chandra, and Dora.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved with the extension as noted, and we'll move on under Item 11 to staff reports and special business, and begin with our chief assessor, Deanna Heickel. Good morning, Deanna.
Good morning. How are you? I'm here today to present you with a revised version of the Assessment Appeals Rules and Regulations. I would like to take a moment to go over some of the changes to the regulations. The one change that I request to be added, that the annual assessment appeals, why it is, August 1st is the deadline, where appeals need to be received on or before August 1st or postmarked by that date. I also wanted to clarify that any changes the board shall make for an annual appeal will affect the next tax year. So they should appeal by the August 1st '23. It'll affect the 2024 tax year. Also-
Excuse me, and that's just, I'll point that out, that that is a clarification for people to understand that more easily when they do that, because there is some misunderstanding. This is the practice, but people-
They didn't realize-
I'm sure you got calls about that.
I do, I do. So they don't realize it's not, it's not gonna happen right away.
And it's because that's statute, correct? So we can't change it.
All right. Also, little clarification on authorized representation. We would like to receive any authorized documentation or an affidavit to appoint a personal representative prior to the hearing. If not, remind people to at least bring it to the hearing with them. Also, one of the main changes is document evidence. The board wanted it stressed, while previously we have stated that we require four copies of all, four hard copies of all documentation, evidence provided to the board 10 days ahead of time. Most people don't do that. They bring it either at the hearing, or they just bring one copy. They don't realize that it benefits them to have it ahead of time, so the board has an opportunity to review the documents and be better prepared for their hearing on that day. I did make a small change to the hearing timing. There was a historic hearing schedule that happened in the past, but currently we do scheduled pill hearings every 20 minutes instead of on the hour. Whoever comes in first goes first. But other than that, do you have any questions concerning any other changes?
No, we appreciate having the advanced opportunity to read through these, also to see the application.
So I guess then, before I take this to my board for approval, the revised rules and regulations are subject to your approval first. So therefore, I request your approval of the Blair County Assessment Appeals Rules and Regulations to be effective June 1st, 2023.
Okay. Are there any questions for Deanna before we ask for a motion for that? Commissioner Burke?
I would make a motion that we approve the revised Assessment Appeals Rules and Regulations to be effective June 1st.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. You can go to the Board of Assessment Appeals tomorrow and tell them it's their turn.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Deanna. Item B is Social Services, and Commissioner McSione is with us, our Social Services Director. Good morning, Trish.
Good morning, commissioners. I am here requesting approval for submission of the state fiscal year 2122 Revision II of the Incoming Expense Report for the Human Services Block Grant for Mental Health, Housing Assistance, Human Services and Support Services, Intellectual Disabilities, and Drug and Alcohol Programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services.
And we will say, this is probably the most minute change-
Minuscule.
Literally, I think it's a digit in the number.
It's, yeah, a zero. There was an extra zero in the number. And it was not a financial number, so.
So it did not impact anything at all. Are there any questions for Trish on that? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the submission of Revision II of the INE Expense Report for the Human Service Block Grant. Is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
Is there any other discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item C, from adult parole and probation, our chief, Amanda Moore, joins us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are requesting approval of the fiscal year 2022 PCCD Grant and Aid Award in the total amount of $70,288 for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2023.
Any questions for the chief?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year PCCD Grant and Aid Subgrant Award as outlined on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Webster, second.
Thank you. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item D, Elections Director Sarah Seymour.
Good morning. I'm here requesting approval of an election service agreement between the county of Blair and Election Systems and Software LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, for coding of the 2023 municipal primary and election ballot with fees as outlined in said agreement, and 12 days of onsite support in the total amount of $34,650.
And this is just for the primaries, primary and general?
Primary and general.
Very good. Any questions for Sarah? Therefore, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with ESNS. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
And lastly, Human Resources, HR Director Catherine Swidron.
Hello. So I am here for two things. The first one is approving a services agreement, once again, between county and Dr. Grace Fowler, for up to six 90-minute-long communication workshops. She bills rather interestingly, and then it's $500 for three hours of workshops, but it is the only thing that she charges for, which is great and has been her pricing for years. We anticipate that the workshops will run between May 2 and the end of June.
She has certainly served us well in the past.
Yes.
We appreciate the fact that she's held her already reasonable prices and kept them there. Any questions for Catherine on Dr. Fowler?
No, I would just comment, I know we had a lot of success with her and children-
No, I would just comment, I know we had a lot of success with her in children and youth, and some of our veteran employees still speak about how helpful it was to them.
I agree. I'm glad she's still doing it.
Nothing else? I'll make a motion that we approve the service agreement between the county and Dr. Fowler, as noted in the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Your second.
Then number two is approving an affiliation agreement to establish the ability for internships, in this case, between University of Toledo College of Law and county.
Commissioner Burke?
I would make a motion to approve the affiliation agreement as outlined.
I'll second that. Is there any other discussion? Some favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Catherine. We have no old business. We have cleared all business for the week in today's meeting. So therefore, Thursday's board meeting will be canceled. It will be posted on the front door of the courthouse in this room so that people are aware of that. We adjourn at this time, and thank everyone for their participation in today's meeting.